We are.
I'd say typically, it somewhat is going to depend on the aquifer they're in and what the depth of the water is. But they're going to be in gallons per minute?
Yeah, or gallons per day, or whatever metric is.
The estimate we always used for private sewer system sizing was 150 gallons per person per day, but research showed that that was probably three times what people actually use. And if you think of it, people in private sewer systems are no different than people in the city. They get up in the morning, they shower, they brush their teeth, they go to work, they come home at 4:30, 5 o'clock, prepare supper. And so unless you've got teenagers, everybody that's got teenagers know they're in the shower for about an hour, hour and a half. So, but the systems again are designed to handle that kind of usage. So, I would say that the, in those subdivisions, you know, the drawdown is going to be way, way, way less than even the city of Verona or the city of Madison have around their wells. The conic depression around those wells is quite impressive if you ever talk to the DNR. But yet, we are somewhat fortunate to be in an area where the groundwater recharge is very consistent and we're tapping endocifers that are deep enough that they're not likely to be affected by droughts or things that we've had in the last few years.
And I guess that was, the reason I asked that question is because I think it's important to understand these matters that we discuss in terms of context. And people brought up concerns about what's 108 private wells going to do in this area. And Bob, I wonder if you happen to know off the top of your head, we had a large payment for well number five before the finance committee today. And I wonder if you know approximately what the pumping capacity of well number five happens to be and how it would compare to these 100 or so private wells.
Mr. Gunlock?
It's 2,000 gallons a minute. Well four is 2,000 gallons a minute. Well three is 1,800 gallons a minute. Well two is 1,000 gallons a minute. And well one is, I think, 600.
So that's substantially more than even all 108 of these combined together?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments at this point? Mr. McGilroy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark, I had the benefit of being at the Plan Commission the other night when you spoke. And one of the things that I noted, you were talking about some of the environmental concerns and the current, a municipality's current model, which is supplying services, and how that those services don't benefit the watershed that they are in typically, as is our case, where we ship our water to MMSD and it goes to the Rock River, I think is what you had mentioned. I wonder if you could speak back to that for the benefit of the crowd who's here, or is here tonight, as well as the people who may be listening?
Certainly. In fact, the matter is that on a public service treatment plant such as Verona, or the treatment plant that Verona pumps to, which is Mass Metro, the water is treated there, but it isn't returned back to the watershed where it was drawn. It's, although I have been corrected, apparently there is either plans in the works or something that's already created where Mass Metro is pumping the water back. But there again, if you're looking at the cost of that, to build the pipeline to them and then build another one back just to get the water back where it started, compared to allowing the homes to have their own private water wells and private sewer systems where there's no cost to the public, and yet the water is being recycled in the watershed where it's being drawn and used. And it's being put back in a, purified to the point where it is not a public health concern, which is actually, to my thinking, is a strong argument in favor of these types of systems, even within urban service or cities, towns, and villages.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from Mr. Clark? Mr. Diaz?
As a general question.
Okay, just go ahead. Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, these are just general comments on the development. I am opposed to the Brown Farm development. I think it's in a sensitive area. I don't like the ideas of amending the city plan or any of the ordinances. If there's problems with the city ordinances, they should be changed, improved. I don't like the idea of just doing one special favor for development. In regards to staff questions, to all of them, my answer is no. I don't think we should be putting any city on well or septic. Furthermore, my, one of my big things is helping to get the downtown core of Verona developed. And it's not just saying yes to development that's downtown, that people can enjoy, but it's also saying no to other development on the periphery. I guess also, if I understand from some of the earlier speakers, if the county's interested in buying the property, I think that's fantastic and I'd rather see that happen to it. If the town develops it, so be it. I don't feel like we're in a race with anybody to develop property. We should be more worried about doing the right thing as opposed to just doing anything. And then just finally, a note for the developer, I think if this was in some other place or a little more dense, I'd be potentially more in favor of it. And I wish you had some property developed closer to the downtown core. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heinrichs, you were in your presentation stage. Is there anything else that you wish to add or anyone else representing your development?
Ron Claus can briefly talk about stormwater management and maybe address some of the concerns of some of the homeowners downstream.
Good evening. My name's Ron Claus. I'm a civil engineer with Denofree O'Kockeen Associates. Over the last 30 years, stormwater management has evolved greatly and become a very important issue with any project, and of course, including this one if it were to move forward. It's been addressed many times within the city, stormwater management with Cathedral Point, Scenic Ridge, Badger Prairie, the Epic Campus. And those methods continue to, I think, get better, different procedures that can be used. And the rules and regulations have changed greatly over the years as well. So whether it's this project or any project, you have to meet those current requirements. It's reviewed very closely by the city and the DNR. There's stringent requirements that have to be met with that, including peak control of runoff, sediment reduction, there is infiltration requirements, and even thermal cooling out in this region. So those all have to be met. Some of the things, some of the measures that we would envision for this particular project would be detention basins, prairie grass areas, wet meadows, all designed to meet the requirements that I just mentioned. Currently, it is ag, and that, as mentioned, it can be intense. At times, it can be wide open with a great amount of runoff. With a project of this nature, it's actually a great improvement in runoff. Despite the fact that there are rooftops and increased impervious areas, the runoff is less. And part of that's just the nature of the land being covered and part of it's the requirements that have to be met. So that, in essence, is the stormwater management issue. Be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Bob can back me up on any of those points, but...
Mr. Manley, you have a question?
I do, thank you. You mentioned the use of stormwater detention basins. And I have a two-part question, and I'd like to hear your answer, and I'd also like to hear Mr. Gunlock answer it, because I think that if you've got two engineers agreeing on the same thing, that there's probably something to that. The first question is, given the agricultural use that the land is in right now, and we heard some people who are good enough to take time out of their day to talk to us this evening, do you think that, given the requirements under state stormwater regulations, that there's likely to be more or less runoff leaving the site if the types of controls that you're talking about are implemented and are required to be implemented under the law? So that's the first question. And the second question is, what does that mean for water quality when stormwater runoff is being directed into detention ponds where there's a settling and filtering effect of the stormwater itself?
To answer the first part of that, the peak rate of runoff would be reduced substantially. And part of the reason is, the current rules don't allow you to run it off at the same rate as an ag field. You actually have to compute it based on pre-development conditions when it was all long grass. So that peak rate would be greatly reduced. And the basins, the prairies, the wet meadows, all serve to reduce the sediment in the water. Just the fact that the ground would be permanently covered reduces that amount of sediment in the runoff. But then there's a second part of that where it runs into these areas and there's further sediment reduction, improving the water quality.
Improving water quality beyond existing conditions?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Gunlock?
Yeah, I would say I agree. By taking that, those farm fields, those cornfields, establishing grassed waterways, lawns, yes, you do have impervious areas of the roads and the rooftops, but the runoff from the rooftops is generally cleaner water than the runoff from the roads. Many times, the runoff from the rooftops can be infiltrated into rain gardens and never actually reach the drainage system. The area out here, I envision that this would probably have roadside ditches instead of storm sewer, which also helps infiltration of the water. As far as water quality, right now, the city of Verona's stormwater ordinance is in line with NR 151 and also the Dane County Stormwater Ordinance, although Dane County allows the runoff to be a little greater than what the city of Verona does. We say you have to go back to pre-development, which is basically a prairie. So, a cornfield, case in point, has a runoff number of probably in the range of 79 to 85. Or you take a grassed waterway or a lawn, you're probably more in the range of 35. And the lower the number, the less the runoff. So there would be less runoff. We would require that there be stormwater ponds for the runoff that does come off of the roads and rooftops, that does reach the drainage way, that that water be routed into stormwater basins that would settle out the suspended solids in that water. They would have to get an 80% settlement of those suspended solids before any water was released. In that, NR 151 regulates the peak rates for the 10, 50, and 100-year. We also regulate those, but because, but they do not regulate volume. If you have a total volume of water, you're going to have more, probably more, volume coming out of here if you have development. So what the city of Verona does where we have water draining into the township, we basically say that that increased volume has to be infiltrated. You cannot discharge more volume into the township than is being discharged in that pre-development condition. So if in a 100-year pre-development condition, the volume was five acre feet of water after development, they could not release more than five acre feet of water into the township after that development. So we're going to go even farther than what the state or county does. So virtually, we would be infiltrating 100%.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the council? Mr. Steiner, please.
Mr. Gunlock, cross-country circle on the north side of town, do they have their own well and septic?
Yes.
Any problems that you've heard of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Heinrichs, anything to add?
Lori Zor from Stark Realty is here. I'm not going to ask her to come up unless somebody would like to hear from her. She will tell you, as I will tell you now, we believe that there's a strong demand for this type of the housing stock, and it certainly gives a diversity of housing stock to a growing community like Verona. So if anybody would like to ask any questions to Lori Zor, who's a top Realtor at Stark Realty.
Are there any questions for Lori? I know most of you on the council were at the Plan Commission meeting last week Monday and heard some of the comments, but are there any, would anyone on the council desire to ask Lori any questions? Not seeing any takers, Tony.
Thank you. And again, as I mentioned last week, I just wanted to point out that some of the calculations we're looking at could, once it's built out, this project could generate approximately, even north of $1 million in tax revenue to the city of Verona and the city schools. I think with that, if anybody has any questions for me?
Are there any questions for Mr. Heinrichs? Mr. yours?
I guess I just wanted to state kind of the same thing that I mentioned at the Plan Commission meeting. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Heinrichs and the way he went through this process. I thought that was very admirable, the way he went and met with me and, you know, tried to answer my concerns as best he could. So I do thank him for that, and really, I do sincerely hope we get to work with you in the future. However, I believe that the logistics of this property are just too much for the city to get into right now. There's the precedent issue of allowing a well and septic in and how that works, and after meeting with city staff again today, that concern still hasn't left me, as well as I'm not sure if the city right now is ready to take on the added staffing that would need in Public Works, police, possibly, you know, other areas of public safety to make this issue work. I know it's hard to look at that tax base number and say that, you know, we're not going to be able to fund those, but we also don't know that for sure. The studies haven't been done for that, and so, once again, I would just like to say, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with this project and therefore can't support it.
Thank you. One thing I would like to point out is that we have met with Public Works, we have met with the Fire Department, we have met with police over the years, and to the best of my knowledge, none of them raised any issues that could not be overcome or worked out with more discussion. And I don't know if there's anybody else that have questions for me?
Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony, you had given a rough number of $500,000 per home as an average price for this development. And is that, do you still think that number is accurate?
Yeah, for today's discussion, yes.
Okay. Because based on that number and based on the city's current mill rate, I did the math at 108 parcels, and that ends up being a little more than $1.1 million. With the city's mill rate, that comes out to about $341,000, almost $342,000 in annual tax revenue for the city. Of course, then the school and the county and the technical college and the other taxing districts get money too. But I think it's important for us, as we think about the need to grow the city, the need for development in our city, the need to be able to meet our, the financial needs of our city, what an additional, almost $342,000 a year would mean. And what I did was I looked at the, just to provide some context for all of us, I looked at the projected costs that were given to us at our Finance Committee meeting for the Fire Department staffing needs. And if you add up the amount that were anticipated to pay for 30 paid-on-premises staff, 40 paid-on-call staff, and three firefighters, this tax revenue would be able to pay for all of that. So it's significant. And for those of us who think it's really important to transition to not just a full-time city department, but to have, you know, shorter response times and better service associated with a 24-hour fire department, this is the type of development that really gets us there. And in my view, given the, what we heard relative to stormwater, what we heard relative to the safety and public health assurances on septic systems, what, you know, what we have, you know, we heard some concerns about transportation, but we routinely, as part of development agreements, you know, require road upgrades if traffic, estimated traffic impacts warrant it. I'm struggling to find a good reason why we would not be supportive of this type of project. I am of the belief that if we can do a development where city services can be, you know, easily and cost-effectively extended to a property, I think we as a city should require city services. But I'm persuaded that it's cost prohibitive and impractical to extend those types of services to this property. And I think it would be an absolute shame if we missed an opportunity to provide the diversity of housing stock that this development would offer to our community and forego, and would forego, and a tremendous amount of property tax revenue that would have a very helpful impact on our city budget. So I hope that we as a body would move forward with this type of a project. I think it's very unique, but it's, I don't believe it would be precedent-setting. We as a body review developments on a case-by-case basis, and we're not a court of law, we're not bound by precedent, any more so than when we gave financial assistance to Edelweiss Cheese because we thought it would be a good idea to help start up a business in our downtown corridor. That doesn't obligate us by any means to give an economic development grant to every single person who wants to develop downtown. Because we offered TIF assistance to the brewery does not mean that we're required as a city to offer TIF assistance to every person who wants to develop inside a tax incremental district. So there isn't a precedent issue here. We, as I said, we as a city are elected to make policy decisions about what we think is in the best interest of our city and what isn't. And if we decide, again, on a case-by-case basis, that allowing for unsued development is in the best interest of the city, then we should go ahead and do that. And in this case, I think that that's a very appropriate way to develop, and I think we heard from the experts that we can do so in a very environmentally sound way that protects water quality. So I'm supportive of this, and I would encourage my colleagues on the body to be supportive as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Additional comments? Mr. Steiner?
Tony, during your time when you were approaching the town and during the time that you approached us, have you met with the citizens who live near this development at all and talked with them personally?
When I first brought it to the town, before I even took it to the town, the first thing I did was invited all of them to the newer library at the time and made a presentation. And I welcome their concerns, and we tried to get a lot of them out on the table. And to this day, they've been, done a good job doing that. And that's a good thing, because I never wanted to shove this down anybody's throat. We wanted to address any concerns. And there's, and at those meetings, I've always been, I've let be known that I'm always open. I'll be willing to meet with you. And so, yes, even prior to the first time that I went to the town, I invited the residents to a meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other comments or questions? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Manley, for crunching those numbers for us. And expanding the tax base is always, always a tempting proposition. And I also recognize that there is a demand out there for this style of development, but I just don't believe that this is a suitable location. I think Verona attracts a lot of residents and visitors to the area for our trails and because we're situated closely to city and the benefits of city life, but we also have that more rural scenic quality to the area as well. So, that being said, in answering staff's questions that they proposed at this time, my answer to all five would be no.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Further questions or comments? Ms. Ricky?
My answer to all five questions is also no. I think that the runoff would be less of a problem. I believe that, what your people have told us, that it would be less of a problem than it currently is. But I don't know that I believe that it would be less of a problem than if it were restored back to prairie land, pre-development. And so I think we need to talk about whether or not it's important to be good stewards of the earth and what that means for people of Verona, and if that means protecting our environment. Do we want Verona to grow in such a way that we're basically a rural veteran community where people have to drive to get everywhere? Or do we want to fill in existing plots in Verona that can take advantage of all the city's services, the most expensive of which are water and sewer? And I've heard from people that we need to think about whether Verona wants to have any green space, you know, kind of as a border to the city, that would, you know, support wildlife and preserve the land, and that Dane County is interested in purchasing that land and restore it back to its original prairie form for all to enjoy. So I don't know that the financial tax gain to the city outweighs all of that, and I really do hope that you are able to find a parcel that already exists in the city of Verona to have a similar development on.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I just, well, I'd like to add two things. One is, just so it's kind of known out there as an FYI, I don't know if people have done this or not, and I did, just kind of out of curiosity, but within just a couple of miles of this, you do have the current Dane County dog park is, and these acres are approximate, it's 172 acres. The Sheddaker's Park is 80 acres. The Bruce Land that Dane County has recently acquired, don't quote me on this, but I think it's in the 5, 6, 700 acre range. The Badger Prairie, I can't tell on the plan book, but if I had to guess, it was a couple hundred acres. The Goose Lake area is approximately 130 acres. So within just a mile or two of this, and that doesn't include any city parks, you're looking at 1,200 to 1,500 acres of that. looking at 1,200 to 1,500 acres of that. I will, unless anybody else has any specific questions for me, I'm done. But, Mr. Mayor, Steve Reinan is a landowner that we are proposing this evening, and I guess it's up to you if you would like him, to give him the opportunity as a landowner to say anything.
Mr. Reinan was here at the plan commission and is here again this evening. And Steve, if you wish to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Steve Reinan, and my wife Karen and I own the 36 acres that is to the east of George Brown's property. This is our land right here. It's kind of shaped like a flag, as you can see, and then there's a very narrow parcel that comes down to the road, 114 feet on Sunset, and then about 66 feet up here. We bought this in 1989 to build a house on, and I bought 50 acres of land, wanted my kids to be able to live out in the country and still be close to everything. We have a son that's adopted from South America, Trevor, many of you might know. He has special needs. And after a few years, it became apparent to us that we needed to move back into town. He needed to be closer to the schools, and eventually it's worked out good because he works at McDonald's and Badger Ridge Middle School, and now we live in town 616 Revallia Drive, for the record. And so that has worked out well for us, but now we have some property that's been dormant for decades, and I can't do anything with it. I can't subdivide it because it's more than 1,000 feet to get back into here. Also, I'm paying taxes on it. And so I had an opportunity to team up with Heinrich's Development Company. And I've lived here for 31 years, and I've watched the city government and I've watched the development of this community, and I know about Tony and his father. And a lot of you don't realize it, especially on the council here, but they have worked with seven different subdivisions in this town. And, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned before, kudos to a certain company that you've had a good track record with. And that's the same case with Heinrich's. And Tony stands before you today, and when he tells you that he's going to work with you, he's going to answer your questions, when he brings experts up here like he has today, you know, they're not just blowing smoke. They are sincere, and you've got to trust Tony that way. And I trust him, and we have a business arrangement to develop this. In 19, oh, I don't know, the mid-'90s, someone contacted me from the Ice Age Trail, and it was a very nice gentleman. We sat down in our kitchen, and he told me what it was all about. And I said, gee, I'm not interested in this time of donating or, you know, setting aside any land to the Ice Age Trail, but someday maybe I will be in the future. And so I put it in my file. And lo and behold, now here we are. And before the spring foliage came out, I walked the land with Ron, our engineer, also with Brad Carrery, he's the field representative from the regional office in Cross Plains for the Ice Age Trail. Laura Guyer joined us, and she's the authoritative person from Dane County that is in charge of land acquisition. There was one other person, I don't remember who that was, but the five of us walked from the parking lot in the Prairie Moraine Park. We came up to here, we came down, and we walked along this area, and then we got into my land, and this is all wooded right through here, and so is a good part of this. It's a very, very desirable place to build some home sites. Anyhow, there's a ridge, you can't see the elevations on here, but Mr. Carrery was very excited, okay? He really liked what he saw. I talked to him this week, told him that we were up to, you know, discussing this tonight. And he said, you know, I would love to say some things, but they really need to remain impartial when we get down to these levels of discussion. And he said that there would be some people here tonight from the Ice Age Trail, who is Mr. Spoon and Dr. Lonsdorf, and maybe there's someone else that spoke that way too, and that they would be representing themselves and not the Ice Age Trail. And so I look forward to hearing what they had to say. The Ice Age Trail is fantastic. We have set aside all this over here. Please keep in mind we are giving them this land, okay? And after looking at it, they, especially Brad, said, well, what we like to do is we like to get along the ridge. We don't want to be down at the bottom. And he made some specifications that Ron and I listened to very carefully. And so Ron redrew this concept plan, and we gave them more room. You know what? It's a little bit more than a sidewalk over here. Someone said a sidewalk, 75 feet. Well, when you add that all up, it turns into an acre or two or three, which is several home sites. So we're giving this to them. And I feel kind of slighted tonight because it's like we're offering them a Chevrolet, but they're asking for a Mercedes. If you have a thousand-mile trail and you're going to run it through the state, you're not going to be able to make it perfect everywhere. You're not going to always have the greatest scenic views. And I know that there are other places where they've already set up the trail, and there has been some infiltration of homes into those areas. You just can't help that at all. And I also can't think that the people that, outside of right here, that are with the Ice Age Trail, aren't thinking that way. I think they would like to see this, but we've got a classic case of NIMBY, not in my backyard. So some of these Ice Age Trail people are right here, and I just wanted to mention that. The other thing that's important is, oh, I was just going to say, my house is right here, let's see, where is it? It's about right there, that I built, and we drilled our well 300 feet, and we had to case that thing 200 feet. So it went really, really deep. The elevation is pretty high. This point on my land right here is about the third or fourth highest point in Dane County. The highest is Blue Mounds, the second highest is right up here where there's a tower on Laverne Hagaman's land, and then there's another point over here. And those are the highest points. Like I said, this is a very desirable area. There are two major concerns. One was precedent. And, Mr. Yurs, you mentioned that the other night after the meeting, and what you said, Mr. Manley, I think really, really answers that. We have very, very competent people on our council. We have a very competent person in Mr. Sayer, that if we get people coming in with high-powered attorneys from here and there, they are going to be able to handle it. We do not have to, you know, grant a favor to one and not to the other, et cetera. The other thing is a fear of unsued lands. Mr. Clark will not, he's still there, he might not toot his own horn, and Ron didn't say very much either, but he is the expert in this area, and anything that he says should be taken very, very seriously. And I think that, quite frankly, he's probably dispelled any problems that would have to do with nitrates and other things related to that. When the things are unfamiliar to you, you have some fear, okay? I was reading the other day a book by a futurist, and this person said, you shouldn't fear the future, it's just different. Well, a lot of you probably never lived on properties with wells and septic. And I did, I was a kid growing up out in the country. Now I'm a city slicker. But anyhow, if you haven't, sure you're a little bit afraid of it. Well, you shouldn't be. My brother lives in a suburb of St. Paul, Minnesota called North Oaks, 600 acres, 600 homes, all well and septic. This is right outside of St. Paul. They have small lakes, and they have wetlands, and they have no problems. So, a couple of other things real quick. You know, it's getting late in here. The other thing that's important is the type of people that are going to live in this community or in this subdivision. When you have homes that are valued at $500,000, and I think if you look around, Mr. Manley, some of the homes might be a little less than that, but if you look at Noel Valley, if you look at Glacier Edge, if you look at the subdivision that's down here on Sun Valley Parkway between Paoli and Oregon, you're going to see homes that are way more than $500,000. And the people that live in those homes are good citizens. They are not troublemakers. They don't strain the city's services. They make contributions like to the tax base, $340,000 a year. That's only going to go up. 600-some thousand dollars wasn't mentioned this year to the school district. These are the people that donate to the food pantry. These are the people that donate to the library. These are the people that donate to the senior center. These are the ones that coach our kids. These are leadership people. These are not slugs. They're good, good people. It fills the void. We talked about the real estate part of things. And if people move from existing homes in Verona to these homes, then they also are going to free up homes for people with a lesser income level that are still good people and come in and buy the homes that we already have. Now, there's the question of what if? What if, you know, there's a few little things that don't work out. What if we have a few lawyers coming in and representing other developments? I lived here for 30, 31 years. I mentioned that before. And I have seen things develop. One of the things that comes to mind is community park where the ball diamonds are, where the hockey rink is, where the shelter is, the snack bar. Some, well, maybe even most of you, Brad, you're probably here, there was a big fit about that. There were a lot of people that didn't think we could afford it. So what if we can't afford it? What if we can't work out an arrangement with Dane County? Because we had to do that for the land that bordered them. What about that shelter? Evelyn Ruska is the elderly lady that works in there and sells the snacks and things to the ballplayers. Well, they wanted to have beer in there, and she was telling this, telling me this the other day. Oh, my gosh. What if somebody sells something to minors? What if somebody gets intoxicated? What if somebody vandalizes this place? Well, you know what? They allowed them to have beer. They don't have any problems. Everything is good. How about the great Epic? Epic is just like a godsend to this community. However, what if they're so big that they push us around? What if they have their way? What if they grow too fast? What if we can't accommodate them? What if they fail? You know? You can't fear the what-ifs. You've got to move, you've got to move ahead, especially if you have some logical reasoning, which I think you guys have been presented with tonight. Last thing. There's a humanistic thing involved with this. I'll bet you hardly any of you know George Brown. I'll bet you that you haven't met him. I'll bet some of you can look out in the audience, and you can't even pick him out, okay? Well, I've known George and I've known his family for many, many years, 20-plus, okay? And I'm going to tell you something about George. He's a common man, but he's a good man. He has lived on that farm or very close to it all his life. Nobody in this room, and I'll bet on this, has worked any harder day in and day out than George Brown has. The last eight years, he has worked as a custodian at the Verona High School. He's 67 years old, and he's still working. He's not a large man. He's physically strong, but you know what? Farm work is hard, and it has really taken a toll on him, yet he is still working. I knew his wife Shirley, Shirley's mom and dad, and their sister, and everybody. And Shirley died from cancer a few years ago. So George has been on his own that way. This land is his legacy, and that's the words that he used. He wants nothing more than to maximize this opportunity for his family. This is his retirement. He didn't work for a corporation. He didn't work for a state agency. He wasn't part of a union. He has no funded pension plans. If this is approved and we can get the ball rolling, then George can retire. And what's he going to do? Maybe he can get a new car, a new truck. Maybe he can go on a vacation with families like a lot of us get to do. In closing, I would just say that I know the members of this council are about helping people, and this is an opportunity to give a break to someone who truly, truly deserves it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reinan. Questions or comments, additional comments from the council? Mr. McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep it brief since we've had quite a bit of comment already. Does the council support private well and septic development for Brown property, Mr. Sayer? Yes, I do. Do I support it in places that cannot be easily served by municipal services? Yes, I do. For the reasons that Mr. Manley outlined, you know, as the Chair of Finance, I can tell you, every year, we worry about our budgeting. This year is going to be no less difficult than any of the years that have come before us. An opportunity to create tax base with quality housing that has been demonstrated as wanted and needed in the city of Verona, I can't say no to that. I haven't been, I haven't seen anything or heard anything tonight from someone that I respect in a professional capacity that would make me think anything different. I understand people who live out there have concerns with the potential that this might have as an effect on their property, but I also understand that Dane County, it doesn't seem like, has done much to address your concerns in the past, nor has the town been able to. I think this certainly presents that opportunity for you to work with this developer. It may not address your issues as far as the vistas go, I understand that, but it doesn't, the water quality issue seems to be the highest issue that I'm hearing from you tonight, and the amount of runoff that's being created out there right now. I do have an issue with Dane County representing that they would come in and buy another piece of property to set aside. We've, I don't have a problem with that. I think Mr. Heinrich's demonstrated that we certainly do have green space in the city of Verona, and I don't think we're going to have a shortage of that if the Brown property comes in and is developed. I could get into a whole nother segue about how it is that Dane County funds buying these pieces of property. I won't do that tonight. No, I don't support this type of service, or this type of development in an area that can be served by water and sewer easily. We looked at this, Mr. Gunlock, help me out, I think we looked at this in our overall master plan about five or six years ago, the potential to develop this, Mr. Diaz represented. I think you'd asked whether or not we were changing our plan. We were looking at development in this area five or six years ago, and we said, no, it did not make sense because it costs two to three times as much to develop with water and sewer. We did not say no to potential development in that area. To Mr. Sayer's point, when this first came before the city, I can tell you, I talked to Mr. Heinrich's, he asked us whether or not the city would be interested, you know, Mr. Mayor, you could jump in and second me on this if you'd like, but we told Mr. Heinrich's that we thought he should try to go to the town because we were trying to have good relationships with the town, because it was consolidation at the time. And we had, we were hopeful that the town would be able to create some tax base for themselves, because in the long run, they're going to be having the same issues that we do with our budgeting. They weren't able to do that. I don't know the reasoning behind it, but I, again, I don't see a good reason, there's no good reason, it's been demonstrated to me tonight, why we should say no to this opportunity. Does the common council support lower-density residential development in outlying areas which may be more difficult or costly to provide with city services? Again, yes, in certain circumstances. And I think, again, to Mr. Diaz's point, that we would be amending an ordinance, we wouldn't be amending an ordinance. We would have to create an ordinance that would very specifically address these types of development and make sure that, I think Mr. Reinan was, or Dr. Reinan was alluding to, that in the event we have other developers that would come before us, we have an ordinance in place that we can stand beside and say, we can support this type of development in only these types of places, so that we don't have to worry about what many of you are talking about, having wells and septic in areas that we could easily service. Finally, does the plan commissioner council support lower-density residential development in outlying areas if the anticipated tax base is sufficient to cover the cost of providing city services? I pay about $7,800 in taxes a year. I have three kids. Those three kids go to the Verona School District. I can't imagine that all these houses are going to have more than three kids, but I can't imagine that they're all going to pay more taxes. Those will directly benefit the school district. They'll also directly benefit school, city services that we all need, including the town, which, you know, we have an issue coming up here a little bit later about our fire, fire district or soon-to-be fire department. We have to find ways to fund that kind of service without jacking up everybody's taxes, including the fees we'd be charging town members in order to have fire service. So if we can find ways to do that, I think it's incumbent upon us as good representatives and good stewards to do that. and good stewards to do that. We can't have all our development downtown, and it defies me, it defies reason for me how...